Great. Nate, thank you very much. Commissioners, are we ready to start? Let me welcome everybody. Thank you for being here and welcome anyone who's online. I'm welcoming you to a regular scheduled meeting Tuesday, March 7, 2023, Veterans Memorial Building, 6 o'clock. And I would like to establish a quorum. And there's four of us here live. I'd like to welcome Joe Ingraffia, Asia King, Eric Meyer. I'm Bill Roshan. All four of us are volunteers and we're very happy to be here and happy that you're joining us. Mike Rodriguez is in Hawaii tonight, so he's really sad he's missing the meeting. So let's go ahead and start with a moment of silence, please. Thank you. And if we could do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Commissioners, any specific announcements before we begin? If we could, let's have public comment. Anybody in the audience who would like to speak on any issue that's not on the agenda? And if you would like to speak on an agenda issue and you have to leave, that's okay, too. Anyone in the audience? Hey, Bill, welcome.
Oh, thank you. Bill Martin, Morro Bay. And I'm mainly doing a bit of a follow-up on the city council meeting. They're in closed door. There was a proposal as far as the purchase of the Old Breakers Restaurant. And I understand in closed door, it's all confidential as far as the sale and the terms. But what I was wondering is if the information's available on what actually is being proposed on the project itself? The size, the scope? And as far as whether the existing? I know later on, we're talking about historical. As far as the building that I believe is historical and it's actually on city-owned property? If that's part of the proposal is to leave it exist or if it's going to be torn down? And if there's any way we can have, you know, kind of just a thumbnail on what's actually being proposed? Because I think this being city property is probably something that would really should come up. The second thing is, on the battery storage plant that's being proposed, I've asked a couple times and I'm not really exactly sure on the proposed amount of square footage of the buildings that are being proposed. I understand I was at a meeting where I was told 100,000 square feet by Vistra. And yet it doesn't equate. And I've heard it could be up to 750,000 square feet, which is the size of three Costco's. So I'm just wondering if there's anyone that would have clarity on exactly the square footage or the size of the three buildings being proposed?
Great.
In case there's an alternate location on how much area might be needed.
Thank you, Bill. Scott, can you give any kind of direction to Bill on that?
There are three buildings totaling a little over 90,000 square feet each. Each. That information in the plans is on the city's website under the current projects page. So you can see it there.
Thank you.
No problem.
So all that info is public, right?
Correct.
Thank you. Nate, do we have anybody in the queue?
We have no raised hands in the queue at this time.
Thank you so much. So let us do this. We have a full agenda tonight. We have special guests, so we're very excited. We're going to be doing one of our information hearings around historic preservation and cultural mapping. But we're going to start, and this is a first for us under, I think, well, maybe Joe's seen Erica Crawford before. But we're very pleased to have Erica with us tonight, who's going to do a 12-minute presentation and bring us up to date on the work of the chamber.
Do you have a clicker?
Welcome, Erica.
Awesome. Thank you very much. I'm happy to be here. It has been quite some time. I think the last time I was here, Joe, you were on the commission. And the title of my presentation was, What Does the Chamber Even Do Anymore? So that would be nice to give you an update, both on the chamber and a little bit of an economic development contract status update. So I will try to not talk too fast, but also not too slow. I always start with just sort of a who we are. So I'm the president and CEO of the chamber. I have been since 2016. We are a 501(c)(6) nonprofit entity. We are a membership organization, a trade association, or a business league. We are organized around a common business interest and our activities are directed to the improvement of business conditions. I work for a 12-member board of directors. I employ two full-time staff members, so we're a total of three full-time staff. I've got a 13-member governmental affairs committee, a seven-member ambassadors committee, and we have various task forces that form for issues. I'll spend some time on this slide for our demographics. 66% of all of our board members are business owners themselves. 100% of board members are business owners, employees, or 1099 contractors. 25% own businesses downtown. 16% own businesses on the waterfront district. The board is a 50-50 split between members who gender identify as female and as male. 84% of all chamber staff, board, and committee members are Morro Bay residents themselves. 95% live in the Estero Bay and 100% live in Slow County, meaning we are a local organization. This is sort of like a chaotic but somewhat flowy chart of who we are. We orbit around our members. The board of directors directs my work. I direct the work of my staff. We have committees that serve at the board's pleasure. I've named them. We are also starting an economic development committee as part of our strategic plan this quarter. And I'm very proud of our strategic plan. We had a real stretch year in 2022 coming out of the pandemic. We threw spaghetti at the wall and saw what sticked, stucked. And we have really kind of honed in on who we are, what we're doing, and why we are doing it. So our vision is for a prosperous and well-informed business community. Facts matter to us very greatly. Our mission is to catalyze business growth, convene community leaders, and to champion a strong community. That is a best practice for the chamber industry now, for the Western Association of Chambers. We've switched from being parties, parades, and pageants, three Ps, to three Cs. Our strategic imperatives that will take us through 2025 include ensuring that the chamber is trusted and sustainable and respected in the community, that we're connecting our chamber members to one another and to resources, that we're influencing policy to support business and economic growth. That's directly related to the fact that we poll our members every year and we ask them what they want us to be doing and how we're doing. And repeatedly, year after year, they tell us that they want us to represent business interests to government. We catalyze business growth, and that's where we'll talk about the economic development contract sum. And we are supporting our employees' needs for a skilled workforce. Just today, I was at the first roundtable of the Cuesta Career Connections in three years because of COVID. So very happy to get engaged in workforce development again. So I've switched into economic development scope overview. Our scope is written with sort of three chunks or three lines of effort. So I'll take us through each of them. The first is in designated proactive representation. This is sort of what am I doing as I'm the ombudsman for the city for economic development? I'm sitting in weekly and biweekly meetings with the city manager. And I look forward to working with the interim. I've been connecting with Sarah Johnson-Rios since Scott Collins' departure and with the community development director. Scott and I meet every other week. We're looking at projects in the pipeline, strategy implementation, long-range planning documents and policy, local and regional partnerships, and then action that we see and places that we can go. And then I'm also sitting in on as many development review team meetings as I can. I don't make all of them, and I wish I did. I have a standing conflict. But those are weekly. Those are to review submitted projects, and that's with staff from building and planning and public works. And I can kind of step in to be a translator or applicant city coordinator when things kind of get stuck. I am, per contract, sitting in the REACH Practitioners Network. REACH is the Regional Economic Action Coalition. It's a two-county effort. I sit in a monthly kind of roundtable with economic development practitioners from various cities. You can see them here, chambers, all throughout the two-county region. Our staff lead is Joshua Boswell. And the practitioner network committee lead this year is Paul Sloan. He's the economic development manager at the City of Paso Robles. We discuss economic development strategy. We discuss projects that are happening in our communities. We share resources, sort of like drinking from a well of economic development practitioners and professionals so that we can implement things, kind of copy. We say rip off and deploy in my industry for R and D. What's working there? How could we use that and just implement it here? As long as it fits the character. Also indicated in the contract is that I serve on subcommittees of the Practitioners Network. So I am sitting on a steering committee for the Certified Economic Development Strategy. It's called the Resilience Roadmap. It's the SEDs. Commissioner King can talk all about and educate us about the EDA and the SEDs process. But this is a two-county blueprint for driving long-term economic vitality and inclusive prosperity in both Santa Barbara and San Luis Obispo counties. And it's critical because it unlocks grants and funding opportunities for cities and counties and even nonprofit groups that are in the region. This study or this effort was funded through a grant, and there were matching funds through Santa Barbara County and San Luis Obispo County. And the core components, they're looking at four target industries for the growth of high-wage jobs in the region, in the areas of ag tech, clean tech, aerospace, and technology. I also, as part of the Practitioners Network or at the request of the contract, sat on the Technical Steering Committee for the Central Coast Emerging Industries Waterfront Siting and Infrastructure Study. Big mouthful. It was looking at waterside infrastructure, evaluating it from the lens of commercial space and offshore wind, emerging industries in our area. This was a pre-feasibility research study. It was funded by Slow County, Santa Barbara County, and the City of Morro Bay. It was project managed by REACH. The engineering firm was Mott MacDonald, who wound up winning the contract. And they were selected because of their objectivity and their basis of assessment, looking at all of the different assets up and down the coast. They were the only of the three that it felt as though they didn't have any preconceived notions on what they were looking at. This study, as it moved through, was continually reviewed by the Technical Steering Committee. I have a slide. I'll show you who was on that. But I served for the City of Morro Bay alongside Eric Endersby, our former harbor director. And it was continually reviewed by an elected official steering committee made up of funders for the study. So former mayor Heading and current city council member Ford were on that review panel. This will be a familiar image for many in the community. I put this up on purpose. These are site renderings. The existing conditions are on the left. And an example of an OMF, an operation and maintenance facility, is depicted on the right. This is an example. This is not a proposal. And this is sort of another piece of the work that Mott MacDonald did, talking about technical evaluation, scientific basis of assessment on what could be feasible, not what should happen. And some of the next steps in the study were to coordinate with AB 525, that's California Energy Commission's, study on seaport infrastructure readiness planning, and NREL, which is a national renewable energy lab. They're doing a West Coast ports strategy study. It was critical for our local voices to come together, to be able to pitch that up to these larger state and national infrastructure studies. And so there was deliberate coordination with NREL on what our findings and the study's findings were saying. And there was coordination. The further recommendations was to have further coordination with the winners of the Morro Bay lease site auction, to look at public and private entity coordination, to review applicable waterfront use policies, especially critical here in Morro Bay, given our waterfront infrastructure needs, Measure D, waterfront master plan, and alignment with waterfront infrastructure improvement needs and plans. Again, we have quite a few needs on the harbor. These are the Technical Steering Committee members. As you can see, NREL was in that table. Now I'm going to bring it back down to earth a little bit, back down to our own backyard. In Morro Bay, what are we doing for economic development? What's our tactical execution? So we just have updated a business resources tab on our website. If anybody in the community has somebody that they know that wants to open a business here and wants to expand, please go to this tab. It is an open source tab. It has everything you need to know about talking to the city, starting a new business, business license. What does the planning department do? What's the building department do? How do you get a planning permit? And has other links to studies that we've done or to partner agencies, SBA-funded business assistance agencies. So I could talk a lot about what is our strategy. I think the driving principle is to know who we are. We are a tourism-driven, tourism-related, industry-driven economy. So we want to look at growing TOT and sales tax because that fills potholes, right? The more our cash registers are ringing, the more we can do. Economic development is the creation of wealth from which community benefits are realized. And we want to increase the tenure of small business occupancy in our economic centers. Early on in 2016, when I started my position, we did a business walk and I was stunned to find out how many of our businesses are on month-to-month leases. So again, what's our strategy? I think that our effort in economic development will be delivered best in Morro Bay if it's deeply rooted in the community. We are out there talking to our business owners, shop owners, property owners, builders, real estate brokers, creating and maintaining those strong relationships to make sure that they understand how Morro Bay identifies and how they may be able to be a part of it. And we also have business retention and expansion strategies. We have a cute thing. We call it the roadmap to success. So anybody who's business-adjacent, who's interested in getting more information about financing, workforce, we have a lot of businesses that want to expand but are very concerned about workforce issues. Construction impact mitigation, this was very important during the WRF construction in the Quintana Business District. We're your guys. We're here to help. I just thought I'd show some pictures of investment in our community, business expansion investment. Many of these are projects or people, business people and contractors that we've touched or that we've had some sort of ombudsman role in. So New Mexican Restaurant on the Waterfront, New Hotel with Retail on the Waterfront, of course, Scout Coffee that's coming. I haven't dug in yet, but I know that the leases, the long-term master leases at the south end of Embarcadero are nearing their term. So we'll be getting involved there. And lots of smiling faces of new businesses in our community who are making investments and trying to make a living here and grow. And new property owners who are trying to find new tenants to occupy these spaces that are just beautiful on the inside, beautiful beams that castaways and interested in doing adaptive reuse of that project. So isn't it refreshing to see all of this new development and new revitalization that's measured and in character with our community? And I'll close out here. The last piece of our contract is more kind of project management. And we've completed a bunch of this. So we did do a feasibility study for a business improvement district in the waterfront downtown areas. We completed this work in the fall, late summer, I think, of last year. We did focus groups. We had a survey out. We compiled lots of research. That is, well, it's not lots of, it's a 16-page report, so it's not super long. So anybody can check it out. It's on our website. I think the findings indicated that of the businesses that were surveyed, they were interested in learning more about a business improvement district. But as we know, that has to be sort of an organic, from within. These are businesses that have to choose to assess themselves. Nobody can tell them to do this. So the findings are out there, and there are some champions in the downtown who are interested in it. And then we also completed a banner program by standardizing and codifying the banner sizes. We've also made that possible for organizations like the Bird Festival that want to get refreshed banners as they grow their event. We know exactly what the sizes are, exactly where they'd be placed. And of course, the wayfinding signs that Scott and I have been working on for what feels like a decade. But we're really happy that they're up. And we were involved in that because those signs circulate people through all four sectors of our economy, Northmore Bay, Quintana, downtown, and waterfront. And that's it. I really just wanted to open up a dialogue with you and just kind of introduce what we're doing and what we're up to these days because we are really an advocacy chamber and then we run an economic development contract.
Erica, thank you very much. You were right on time.
Really?
I appreciate that.
I feel like I talked really slow.
Let's see. Are you open to some questions?
Of course.
Can we do that?
Yeah.
Let's start with the commissioners. Do we have any questions? We're not going to do discussion tonight on these topics, but questions are open.
Sure.
Asia?
Yeah, thank you for that presentation.
Sure.
I'm wondering if you guys are involved at all in disaster recovery because Slow County got a national disaster declaration for these past storms. There's going to be specific economic development dollars opened up to the county and want to make sure we're pursuing those as applicable.
We were involved, you know, early days, like boots-on-the-ground, kind of making sure that we were advocating up to our elected local state representatives to unlock that funding, to say, hey, this is an actual disaster. I was in the emergency operations center helping with outreach and being kind of a PIO-adjacent type of a function. But in terms of unlocking those dollars and tracking that, I'm not, I haven't been, but I'm going to follow up with you.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Okay. Thank you.
How many members do you have?
We are at 309.
Thanks.
Joe?
I just want to say extraordinary presentation, as I've come to expect from you. And it just cements, for me, anytime we might generate some initiative or idea. You're an essential person to consider and consult, you know.
It's not just me. I've got really, you know, pretty great board, and I'm very proud of them because they are interested in leaving the organization better than they found it. You know, we have very healthy succession in our leadership now. And even our governmental affairs committee, our co-chairs are kind of crossing, and that's just kind of growing now because we're in our fourth year. So I'm proud of that. It's leadership, and they're also my bosses, so I have to say that.
Thank you.
So Erica, I do have one question. On the waterfront sighting?
Yeah.
An infrastructure study? Where are we now with that? Can you give us a current point?
That work is complete. So there's a state lands study that came out about two, three weeks ago, waiting on the NREL study, intently watching the AB 525. But I think there's a, you know, we need to kind of, offshore wind is complicated, you know, and it's moving. And nobody really knows what's happening. It's brand new. The auction winners are not even officially lease owners yet, you know. So staying in the moment, you know, staying fact-based, being in the room and talking about, making sure that local voices are there. But I would say if the community of Morro Bay and if the county wants to take that into a Phase II study, I think that that's a possibility, but that's an unknown at this time. But that work is complete, and it's not hiding anywhere. It's right there on the REACH website. People can pull that out, go to initiatives, offshore wind.
Thank you for that update. And Scott, is there any issue citywide relative to that study? Next steps or potentials coming to city council? How would you describe?
We don't really, at this point, have any next steps. I mean, right now, as Erica was talking about, we have the three, you know, sort of initial lease winners. They haven't been given leases yet. And those entities are making contact with the city and talking to us about various aspects of what their projects and needs might look like. And so that's kind of where we are. I mean, we're like baby steps, like into the process right now and kind of initial contact and meet and greet stuff. It's, we haven't really dove into, you know, big-ticket items yet or anything. Super juicy.
Thank you for the heads up.
And there is a wind conference in May. And the Pacific Offshore Wind Conference happening in Sacramento. And I'm going thanks to some sponsorship from some members that want the chamber to be there. So that's good. And I hope the city will be sending representatives as well.
Erica, would you take questions from the audience? Would that be okay? Or do you have time?
I'm not going anywhere. Sure. Yeah.
Do we have any questions from the public regarding the presentation? These would not be debates. They would just be question-specific. Teri, welcome. Introduce yourself for us.
Yes, Teri Simons, Morro Bay. I was a little confused about the way this item was agendized. You addressed it in your opening remarks as a hearing, but I think it's called a presentation. So I wasn't sure whether there was going to be an opportunity for public comment or public questions. I am curious. I noticed in the presentation, there was reliance on one of the studies. I think it's the REACH study about the potential for providing Morro Bay as a site for shoreside facilities for the wind. And I was curious whether the chamber has taken a position on that? And if so, what that position would be.
Great. Thank you.
Want to do them all at once and I'll answer?
Yeah, let's go through, anybody else?
Well, it's maybe a totally ignorant question. It's based on my reading the Tribune newspaper, which said recently in an article that any wind farm is going to need, I think it was a $2-point-something-billion-dollar port to coordinate with. And so it didn't look like Morro Bay would work after all. And I thought, whoa, it's a done deal because, well, I have to tell you secretly, I'm not happy with that whole thing of carving up the ocean and calling it blue energy and a good thing because it still is not really so. That's all. I just wanted to know if that was factual, what was in the paper, that we wouldn't work out as a proper harbor for them.
Got it. Thank you for being here. Erica, do you want to answer those two questions?
So the simple question is that the chamber does not, our chamber, although we could, does not take positions on people. So we do not endorse candidates. We do not do that. And we do not take positions on projects. We do take positions on policy.
Got it.
And we are very interested in staying at the table. I think it's a trope, but maybe it's not that civil. If you're not at the table, you're on the menu. So we need to stay at the table with this major industry and making sure that we're staying involved moment-to-moment and being able to reference materials that are studies and that are fact-based. So that was, so Teri, to answer your question? We have not taken, there is no project to take a position on, and we do not take positions on projects. So we are staying engaged. Our interest as a chamber in offshore wind is that we want to make sure that it is selling more pizzas, selling more omelets. How is this going to get cash registers ringing? How is this improving workforce development and jobs? How are we aligning what could or couldn't be coming with workforce development and supply chain development to diversify our economy?
Erica, thank you very much. Did you have anything to answer to Bernadette's question?
I didn't hear a question. It was, I guess, is the Tribune accurate? And I don't have an answer to that question.
Okay.
It was about, sorry.
I do think what they're talking about is a deep-water port for the construction of the wind facilities. And certainly, that's not Morro Bay. The discussions we've been having related to Morro Bay is more operations and maintenance-type things.
And that's directly addressed in the study that I referenced tonight, that we did not meet the siting criteria for a large port. And that, but again, the development companies who are provisional lease winners don't have their construction operations plans yet, and they won't probably for two to three years, maybe longer.
Erica, thank you very much.
Sure thing.
Really helpful. Just to be sure, Nate, anybody in the queue?
There are no raised hands at this time.
Are you doing, last name?
Oh, there are no raised hands at this time.
Thank you. And before we leave this issue, Asia had one more question.
I just wanted to make a note to the public that the chamber and Erica sent a really helpful letter to, which I believe was posted publicly, about the chamber's review of city goals and recommendations to the planning commission. And so I encourage the public to check that letter out as it's a really informative piece. And that's all.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the consent calendar. Commissioners, we have three items. Any discussion on the three?
I need to abstain from A2.
So do we need to do separate votes? We can, do we, for each one?
So we can start with the advanced planning list? That's just a receive and file if we're good with that?
Okay, yes.
That's all I need for that, really?
Yes.
Okay. And then, so can I get a motion on A2?
Please, commissioners.
Yes, I move for A2.
Joe, thanks.
I can second that.
Asia, thank you. Do we need a roll call?
Yes, okay. So Commissioner Meyer?
I have to abstain. I have to abstain on that.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Ingraffia?
Yes.
Chair Roshan?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0. Thank you.
A3, February 3rd.
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Thank you. Second?
I second it.
Thank you, Joe. Would you do a vote?
Yep. Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Engraffia?
Yes.
Chair Roshan?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Public hearing. Let me introduce case number MAJ 22-002. The site location for this case is at 701 through 715 Embarcadero. And let me start, should we start with staff presentation? Cindy, welcome.
Thank, thank you. Wrong, wrong presentation. I don't think I could do as good of a job as Erica with the economic, the chamber presentation.
She, she practiced, yeah.
I always practice. Okay, thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. Good evening, commission and members of the public. This is a major modification request for 701 to 715 Embarcadero Road. The location of the city lease sites is on the screen. This is the location of the Dutchman Restaurant, Dolphin Shirt Company, and an existing commercial fishing use and wharf at the rear of the 715 building. The project was previously approved in 2021 as MAJ 20-004. It was approved for conversion of the commercial fish processing wharf to a new retail use, as well as new HarborWalk public access improvements, outdoor dining and building facade improvements, and some other miscellaneous improvements there, itemized at the top of the screen. The item is before the planning commission tonight because as part of the process, the applicant subsequently received its coastal development permit from the coastal commission in December of last year, which required changes to the project that include additional public access improvements, but it now also requires an amendment to the local city conditional use permit, major modification. Those coastal commission changes are itemized in the staff report. They're also summarized here on the screen for you. This includes an additional public HarborWalk access area at the, on the bayside of the 701 and 715 Embarcadero buildings, interpretive panels, public seating, new piles to support the additional HarborWalk extension, and a reconfiguration of the commercial fishing wharf and, excuse me, less demolition than what was previously approved. I'll show you some slides on that coming up. And then replacement of the fish offloading crane. Additionally, the applicant is also making project changes that would include maintaining the commercial fish processing, processing use and color scheme of the buildings. No changes are proposed to the public street-facing outdoor dining. So planning commission's previous discussion included a focus on the public access components of the project, specifically in regard to the HarborWalk connection and preservation of the commercial fishing wharf. So on this slide, I've outlined a change from the two site plans. On the left is the site plan of how the project was approved by the commission in 2021, and then the project site changes that are being proposed this evening after coastal commission's required changes. So on the left, you see, outlined in our orange is that extension of the HarborWalk, the connection. And then at the rear of the 715 building is that existing commercial fishing use that was proposed to convert to retail. And in the, the changes to the project tonight, on the right, the commercial fishing wharf, there is an additional five feet that is being proposed not to be demolished. So originally, it was going to include that HarborWalk extension pop out by about six and a half feet, and it's now about 11 and a half feet.
May I interrupt? So is the, the current new proposal?
On the right.
It matches the existing size of the, of the dock?
No.
It's still shorter?
It's still shorter, yes.
By about how much? Do we know?
I'd have to look at the plan.
Okay, let's keep going.
Yeah, okay. And the, so on this slide, on the right, you see the commercial wharf. On the left, and I don't know if my pointer here will work. Well, I don't, on the right, the left orange squares represents the 20 square feet of additional HarborWalk extension. And then the blue squares represent the location of coastal commission's required public seating benches. But it still includes the full HarborWalk connection extension, but less of the commercial wharf demolition. So with regard to the previous planning commission conditions on the project, there were some conditions that would be affected with the, or could potentially be affected with the proposal tonight. The first one is condition 16, which related to the proposed conversion to the retail use and increasing the visibility to the wharf area. In this, the planning commission should consider whether that condition is still appropriate and should remain on the project as, in this case, the commercial fish processing use will remain. And on the screen, you see the condition 16, as it was approved by the planning commission, which specifically related to adding glazing in the form of window and door area that would equal a certain minimum percentage. And then the second one is planning condition 21, which, as noted below in black, that planning condition, planning commission condition requires preservation of wharf planking and edge curbs for the portion of the wharf that is to remain. And as I stated, the applicant is proposing to retain a greater portion of the wharf than previously approved. And then in addition, they're also proposing to replace the fish offloading crane. So on this, based on the project changes, planning condition, planning commission should consider revising condition 21. And what staff is recommending is the area, the text in white is what staff is recommending that the planning commission consider revising based on previous planning commission discussion and deliberation regarding the historic nature of that commercial fishing wharf and, and making sure that that historic nature of that wharf remain. The applicant is proposing to replace, excuse me, retain the decking to the greatest extent feasible, but revising this condition would make it more clear in the record that the intent is that as much of that decking should be preserved as possible. Here are some visual simulations to help give you a visual. On the, on the top of the screen is showing the 20-foot, square foot pop-out addition at the northwest corner of the 701 building. On the right, right above the word where it says proposed, is the small little area. That was one of the coastal commission conditions is for additional public access enhancements. And then at the bottom of the screen is the view looking south. And you can see on the left where there currently is no HarborWalk access, and there's the existing covered outdoor dining patio. That is part of the project will be removed and that extension put in. So that remains the same. That's how the commission approved it in 2021, and that is still there. But you can also see the wharf area there on the right. And in this image, it's depicting the commercial fishing wharf, the extent of the wharf on the left, and then partial demolition of the wharf on the right with the new offloading crane. So this proposed west elevation illustrates also the changes to the wharf. And you can see the proposed hoist and curb changes from the previous guardrail. And here in this area, the HarborWalk guardrail, the cable railing is not proposed to extend all the way to the edge of the lease line boundary in order to accommodate the commercial fishing use that would stay. And then this is the north elevation. You can see on the right the proposed fish offloading crane and the fishing wharf pop out. So in addition to those changes, planning, the planning staff is recommending that there be a planning condition number 13 that's added to make it clear that the resolution that's before you in your staff report does not specifically reference these previous planning commission conditions 15 through 23. And as a standard rule of thumb, to make it clear, our staff is recommending that condition 13 be added in quotations, which would be that all planning conditions approved with MAJ 20-004 shall remain in full force and effect. And that's subject to amendment should the commission decide to either delete or modify that planning condition 16. But in conclusion, the project is consistent with the previous approval the planning commission made in 2021. This item is before you because of those conditions that the coastal commission applied to the project that does require a change to the city's permit. And then also additionally, the applicant has decided to retain that commercial fishing use. That was a desire by the commission previously to retain. This is a unique area where we don't see commercial fishing, fishing use in the central part of the Embarcadero. Staff finds us that this is consistent with that previous approval. And so therefore, we are conditionally, or that we are recommending that the planning commission conditionally approve the project by adopting resolution 0523, which includes the findings and conditions of approval depicted on plans dated February 2nd, 2022.
Cindy, thank you so much. Can we welcome the owner's representative, please?
Good evening, Chair Roshan and commissioners. My name is Kathy Novak from Kathy Novak Consulting, and I'm here representing the project for the 701, 715 Embarcadero tonight. Staff has again done a great job outlining the specific items and the changes that are requested with this permit modification. As you can see by the report, we spent considerable time at the coastal commission and have done a lot to incorporate several other public benefits with this revised project. Beyond that, I really don't have much to say without being redundant. However, I would just like to make one comment regarding condition number 16. Originally, when this part of the building was proposed to go retail, the windows and the new door made logical sense for the customer experience. Now that the proposal is reverting back to fish processing, they need to keep the roll-up door to allow enough room for the forklift and other fish unloading and processing equipment to move in and out. Second, the added glazing on the west side of the building will become problematic for the interior operations. The additional sunlight and possibly safety issues with large equipment moving around inside could lead to broken windows in short order. There will be, also be bins stacked for storage, tables and other gear that will undoubtedly block the windows, which defeats the purpose for which would normally be intended for retail-type use. Adding the extra glazing in this area just does not make sense for this type of operation. So therefore, the applicant is requesting that the commission modify condition number 16. We would like to request the commission delete the glazing requirement for this particular use. However, in the future, if there's a change of use to retail, that the glazing condition be applied. One further note on this is that in the future, if they decide to change the use, I, well, we may need to go back to the city for a modification. Cindy and I had a little conversation about this this afternoon, but the new zoning order is trying to make things a little bit easier. But in any case, I think that the solution is retail, there would be glazing, no retail and then no glazing. In conclusion, the applicant is pleased with the modified project. They once again have the opportunity to put commercial fishing operations back here. We believe that this change is a benefit to the community and has components that the commission has sought to keep in the first proposal. On behalf of the Van Beerdens, I hope the commission is pleased with the modifications that we have proposed and would ask for your support for the, as the project is presented tonight with this modification as well. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions. But before I leave, I'd just like to take a minute to address a public comment letter that came, that you received, because there's a couple of comments regarding this project and another project that I worked on. And I think it might be helpful for the, the commission and also for the public. In this one particular letter, it said that there was a long and exhausting history of process by the community development project for this project. However, the problem was not really with the city. I, we spent 13 months at the coastal commission. So when you take a look at the original approvals of this project by the city, and here we are tonight, it looks like there was a big chunk of time. But like I say, we lost 13 months at the coastal commission, so I just wanted you to be aware of that. On the, there's another one, a recent item on the waterfront was significantly delayed in final approval because of the process. So it wasn't, if it's this project, again, it was because of the coastal commission time, so we weren't losing any time from the city. Also, there was a comment about the discovery and late in the process for a need for a lease site boundary amendment. That had to deal with another project down on the, on the Embarcadero. I believe it would be reference to the salt building. But it was not a late discovery in the process that we found the lease line adjustment was necessary. We actually proposed that originally with the original submission to the city. Typically, on a waterfront project, we'll have the surveyor come out before we submit a project to the city, have a survey, and then we might discover that the docks or something might be encroaching beyond the lease line boundaries. So we picked that up in the original project description. We put it in, we make the city aware of it, we make it part of the approval process. The city takes a separate action to do the lease boundary adjustment later on in the process. So we're happening, we're going through that process with the salt building right now to make this lease line adjustment. The city council just approved that in January. We're a little bit delayed with that, only because there was a staff turnover and with Rob Livik and Eric Endersby and everybody. So the, the city staff wasn't totally familiar with this process. So we're a little delayed with that. It's not holding their project up, but the city is, you know, getting a new direction on how they're going to handle these things.
Got it.
So, and this project will not require lease boundary adjustments. We, we've already identified that. Then I think the last thing was having to do about the fish unloading hoist. There was seemed to be, indicating there was a position contrary to the fishing operations, but I think I made it clear. So the original project, we were doing retail, so we did not need the hoist down there. So it came out. With this project, we're putting the fish processing back in. We need the hoist, so we're putting the hoist back in. We're adding some additional wharf area. About 50% of the original, of the existing wharf was proposed originally to be removed. We've added about another five feet on that. That's about the maximum that we can push the wharf out without installing more piles. There's three existing piles that'll be repaired, and this is an acceptable cantilever over those three existing piles that will be repaired that we can, as far as we can go, because we had an engineer look at that, so.
So how much shorter is it than the existing? Did you figure that out?
I was looking at my plans. I have an old set of plans, and I didn't bring a, with me, so I'm a little confused. But I think it was, the original was like about 45 feet or so for, that we were keeping. We got another five feet, so somewhere around 50. But it's going to be more than 50%, just a little bit more than 50%.
Okay.
If that helps.
It looks like it's about 20 foot shorter than it was.
Something like.
Like, there's like a number on the plans that shows 50 foot, and then now the length will be 30, with the additional five.
Thank you. I couldn't figure it out, yeah.
Well, if the 50 foot's right, it's small and hard to read on my small set of plans, but.
So Kathy, if you could stay there a minute. Commissioners, questions either for Cindy, for staff, or for the applicant?
So Kathy, to be clear, so the, the, the one that's currently proposed, the, the commercial fishing dock will be larger than when it first came to the commission? Is that correct?
Yes. So we're increasing the square footage of the wharf beyond your first approvals.
And, and that area, what I call the commercial fishing area, it's going to be restored in terms of the, what are the oak planking that's there now?
We're going to keep the wood planking as much as possible. I think that they'll be able to repair the piles by putting the sleeves around the piles rather, I mean, not, excuse me, not sleeves, but the jackets rather than the sleeves. If you put a sleeve around the pile, then you have to have access from the top to sleeve down through the pile. But since the piles are going to be underneath the wharf, I think they can put a jacket around there and repair the piles that way. So hopefully, they won't need to remove any of the wood decking. The problem that we run into is the deck planking is so thick and the nails are so big that when you try to pull the nails and the decking up, it breaks the decking. So sometimes we can't save it. But those, you know, keep as much as they can and not remove that wood decking.
That, that was my question. I was, I was wondering if, I was thinking, I was, you know, sort of untutored in this, that you would pull the planks up and undoubtedly some would be rotten or some would break. And what would that mean if you had destroyed planking in terms of putting these, this oak planking back?
Yeah, we'd have to try to find different planking because a lot of those old ones are crease out, and you're not going to find that anymore. But I, you know, we've been looking at this and we're trying to do everything with the repair underneath so that we repair underneath so that we, and we'll have to add some more additional hoist on there for support and that kind of thing, but I think that that can be done with sistering and changing the beams around to be able to accomplish that. So they're going to do that the best that they can.
Thank you.
Asia, question?
I noticed on the renderings that there, I'm sure because it's going to be in use, there aren't railings around the.
Partially.
There are partial railings.
So on when the first, from the east side going west, the first part of the wharf on the north and the south side, there will be some railings there, but there will be a point where they will stop, and we'll just have the kick rails like that we, you see right now, because they need access with the hoist swinging a bucket across. They can't have any kind of railings. So it'll be somewhat akin to like the north tee pier, the south tee pier, doesn't have any railings.
Same condition there, right?
Yeah, I was just wondering if there was like a little rope that could be put across or some kind of, or if there was like a plan for, I know that area will be shut during use, crane use, but I didn't know if there was like an additional way to, or if it was important even to rope off access to the crane on that side where there's no.
No, they can usually lock the cranes down. It should be fine. We see those all over the place. I mean, for example, like down Giovanni's right now, people can walk down the harbor walk, walk on the wharf and the hoist is there, the north, the south tee pier had a hoist. So you see common.
Yeah.
Equipment sitting around on the, on the wharf, shouldn't be a problem.
Yeah, I think I was looking through the eyes of my toddler, wondering how attractive that would be, so, thank you.
Eric?
I have a random question for you, Scott. The content of the interpretive panels, what body decides what content goes on those panels?
Oh, okay, I can jump in on that one. The Coastal Commission has dictated to us what is going to be on the panels. One of the panels is going to be about women in the fisheries, and the other one is going to be about oysters.
I'm familiar with what's on them, thank you. I just was curious.
Yeah, normally what we do is we propose to work with the Community Development Department, and we work with the Morro Bay Historical Society, so the Historical Society's got a, a list of different types of panels that they want to put in on the waterfront, and we try to put a panel in that is close to, for example, when we did the, down there by the Hoffbrow, the, the old Trestle Bridge was close to that location, so we used the Trestle Bridge because of the location to that. So we try to tie it to that best we can, then we, we run it through the Community Development folks.
But who writes the copy, then?
The Morro Bay Historical Society's been the one that's been providing the photographs and the copy.
Got it.
And then we have one, our local artist, that's been putting the panels together, so we've got a common artist that does all the different panels.
Got it.
And just a little, a little side note, the Central Coast Women for Fisheries is going to be putting up five new panels from Beach Street toward the south tee pier. They just got Coastal Commission approval on that not too long ago, and they'll, should be delivered hopefully next week or so, so look for some new panels coming up on fisheries.
Great. So I do have one question. I want to make sure I understand. The Condition 16, which is asking for glazing, we're going, you're proposing that we eliminate that because of the process fishing use.
Continue if it goes back to retail.
Well, but that's what I want to figure out, is how to do that. So if retail comes back, Scott, what is the process that the project would have to go through?
So it depends. Certainly, we could add language in here that, that has the glazing come back with the retail use going into that space, and we could add the conditions to this project. Or it would something, if they came back and we're going to be making changes to that area, that would something that's probably, that would probably come back to the Planning Commission potential.
Would, would a change of use be sufficient?
A change of use wouldn't trigger a Planning Commission review, no.
But it would, it would have to come back for an administrative change?
Correct, they would, yeah, they, yeah, they, we, it could be part of this approval. We could change Condition 16 to incorporate that. We've talked about it internally, and we could add that language to it, that if it changed to retail, that the glazing was required, and then if they didn't want to do that, or they want to do something different, depending on the scale of what that different is, they might have to come back.
Then they'd have to come back.
Correct.
Okay.
So, yeah. Happy to do that if the commission desires.
Thank you. Any other questions, Commissioners? I'd like to do public comment. Anybody want to comment further on the project? Hi, Terry.
Hi, I'm back. I'm working on that merit badge here tonight again. Ms. Novak and I discussed this project before the meeting, and I think most of the concerns that I had were addressed by her, and I think she addressed them adequately before the commission. However, watching the presentation did trigger a couple of things in my mind. The staff seems, and it's hard to say, but it appears that in their conditions, they're referring in a condition to be subject to conditions of something not in the conditions. That's always frustrating from an administrative point of view. It seems like all the conditions ought to be in the conditions, or, or you shouldn't have language that requires revising and going back to some other prior thing. I don't know if I'm making sense or not. Maybe I just misunderstood the way it was presented, but it sounded like, I think it was Condition 16, it was on the previous slide, said that all the things in such-and-so prior approval would be attached to this condition, but it didn't, it seemed like you didn't want to add those into this conditions of approval. Anyway.
Okay, we'll take that. As we make the motion, we'll make sure we're clear.
Yeah, please. And other than that, I was a little confused that the fishes, fish, fish operations coming or going, but I guess there's a fish operation coming so that the loading facility is not technically an open facility for other fishermen to use. It's proprietary to the fish operation itself. Is that?
Kathy's nodding, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Betty, welcome.
Betty Winholz, some of this is just opinion I want to express. I'm disappointed with the Coastal Commission that they want to cover more of the water. I always think covering water should be less rather than more, and I'm glad to see that the fish processing business is back. However, is there someone willing to do that, or is there already a business? Because I think that was part of the issue before. Do we even have someone to run the business? So the retail's going to come back really quickly. So I'm just, my question is, is there a fish processor already on the line for that? And I did appreciate the conversation about the planking, because from the pictures, it looked like the wharf was going to be all new planking, but you're saying they're going to try to preserve as much of that as possible, which would be what I would like. And for lastly, I'm disappointed that the panels have already been dictated, because I don't think that particular area deals with the oysters, and it seems to me you would want to have a different kind of fishing information station than something about something that's not even related to the area.
Yeah, interesting.
And so I'm just going to throw that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy, would you respond, please?
Happy to. Yes, we do have a fish processor, processing company, operation that wants to come in, and that's the reason why we're asking for this permit amendment tonight, because he was, the Van Beerdens were approached. And then again, we were dictated by the Coastal Commission of what the topic was for the panels, so apologize, we didn't have any kind of say in that one.
Yeah, a different issue, I do think. Nate, anybody in the queue?
There are no raised hands.
Last chance for public comment on this issue. I will close public comment. Commissioners, motions, discussion?
The, the point of the Coastal Commission dictating, Kathy, I mean, were the applicant or we to object, simply on the basis that the installations aren't particularly relevant, and we might be able to come up with something more relevant, is that, that authority completely subsumed, you know, by the state authority? We really have no voice in what sort of installations are put there?
Normally, the Coastal Commission doesn't usually weigh in on detail like that because of several of the other projects I brought forward. They've never questioned what type, what the content of the panels were, they just were one of the interpretive panels. But for some reason, they felt compelled to weigh in on this particular one and asked us specifically what we were going to put in, so there was quite a bit of discussion, and so we're limited. We'd have to go back to the Coastal Commission and ask them for an amendment if we wanted to make a change, because this is something we've agreed to.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Asia.
Could someone clarify about the Kathy's comment on keeping the roll-up door instead of the door and window for glazing in the Condition 16?
Yes, in that, that section of the building right now, there's a steel roll-up door because of the fish processing before. When the commission approved the project that originally came to you, we were going to install a new small door because it was going to be retail, and we're going to, it was going to be part of the glazing. Well, now that we're going back to the fish processing operations, we need to retain that roll-up steel door so that it's wide enough for the forklift and the bins and things to get into that portion of the building.
It's basically going back to the way it.
What it was.
It's going to be unchanged, but what we're going to do is articulate a condition that if retail does happen.
Right.
It is the expectation of the Planning Commission that we would go back to that condition of glazing.
Correct, and the applicant's fine with, if it goes to retail, providing the additional glazing, because it involved putting a new door on the north side of the building there, and also windows and et cetera on the west side of the building.
Yeah.
But for the purpose of fishing, we're just going to keep it as is.
So Commissioners, comments, or are we ready for a motion?
I can start a motion, and we can correct it.
Yeah, let's start one. Eric?
I would move to approve the project by adopting a motion that includes the Planning Commission Resolution 05-23, which includes the findings and conditions of approval for the project depicted on site development plans dated February 13th, 2023, but with the addition of a Condition 13, which, I don't know the exact, I think it was MAJ 20-0004, that shall remain in full force and effect. Is that the language you wanted? Right, there you go, I'm sorry. And then with respect to Condition 16, that should be modified to retain the existing roll-up door and delete the glazing requirements unless the use changes to retail, in which case the glazing, as described in the project, shall be a, a part of that change. Is that, see any changes you want to make there?
Cindy?
And can I also have commentary on if you wanted to modify Condition 21 with the text and what?
Yeah, so I have some friendly amendments I'm going to make. Eric, is that all right?
Yep, yep.
What, I want to make sure we've got the trigger on the retail thing. What is the trigger in the condition?
Use change? Use change?
It would be a use change to, to retail.
So that's good enough.
Yes, yeah, we would, we would, subject to the use change to.
On, on Condition 21, I would like to strike the words "to the greatest extent feasible." I think that's, not that we're unreasonable, but I would rather not start from there. Is there a language we could put in, Scott, Cindy?
I think it depends what you're looking for. I mean, are you looking for?
I'm looking for compliance and best effort.
Right.
So how we define best effort, we would need some sort of explanation why they can't, or why they've run out of, because there's quite a bit of planking there, so it takes more work, but it could be done. So I'm trying to get a more committed condition.
Well, I mean, when we use that, we use that language when we want something to be committed. That's typically what we use. And I mean, we have the direction from the commission here, and we understand the desire to maintain that, so they're going to have to like show the math if they can't do it. I mean, that's, you know, that's clear. I, I mean.
Bill?
Yeah.
Are you getting that, sort of a technical engineering possibility as opposed to financially prohibitive, that sort of thing, the difference between those?
I mean, it could be.
Well, no, but I'm suggesting is we, we would like feasibility, meaning the former, not the latter.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's what we would be requiring, you know? If they said, oh, we can't do it, well, like, it's not going to be okay if the leaseholder says they can't do it.
So you're saying, Scott, this, the fact that we've raised this issue is enough?
It is.
That it's very clear what the commission's trying to do?
It absolutely is.
Okay.
Yes, I would not, I would not be comfortable moving, you know, forward and saying, yeah, it's fine, just because they want to do it, given the desire to preserve that. And we would be looking for, you know, as Commissioner Graffia indicated, probably something along the, the lines of reasons from an engineer.
Okay.
Saying why we can't use the planking that they're proposing, so.
Okay, so as long as that's clear, and I guess my third point would be, one of the conditions did say that the applicant would do their best to, to try to save the old hoist, and that's still a condition, right?
Right, that, that still applies to the project, and, and I did actually restate these conditions. So these original conditions are all in your staff report, they're one of the attachments, but that's, right there, that's Condition 23, which is still on the project.
Got it.
Which is why I recommended that Condition 13, just to make it abundantly clear that.
Right, and that worked well in the staff report.
Right, yeah.
Okay, so I'm good.
Aren't they replacing?
Well, they're, they're not going to save it in place, but the idea, when we did this condition, was they were looking to save it maybe the Marine Museum or.
Donate it.
Yeah, that's still there, that the attempt would be made. Kathy, no?
Yes, we can't take that existing hoist and repair it and use it. They will, they'll get a new hoist to replace.
It would be, is it a, I don't even know if it's got any kind of historic value. I'm asking you to, you know, go to the Maritime Museum and ask.
I, I can certainly do that.
Okay.
There's probably not too much value in it, but because it just, most of those hoists are pretty standard things, but.
Well, it's kind of cute, yeah.
But there will be, there'll be a replacement, but that's, you know, I knew it would work better.
Okay, that's, that's mine. Eric?
I think we're good if that motion's acceptable to staff.
Do we have a second?
All right, I will second that.
Any further discussion? Staff, any comment before we vote?
I'm good.
I think we're pretty good, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Would you call, roll?
Sure, yeah.
Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Graffia?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Chairperson Roshan?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes 4-0.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Kathy. Commission, do we want to take a very short break? We've had our guests waiting for an hour now. Can we do five minutes?
Yeah, sure.
Is that okay with our guests? I do apologize you had to sit through this. Michael, thank you. Gail, thanks. So we'll take a five-minute break.
I feel like I just learned so much from Kathy.
Thank you again for your patience. I'm a little prejudiced this is the best part of the meeting, so thank you all for staying and we're very excited to be doing session two on our information sessions around historic preservation and historic mapping, how our history really influences our planning, our planning process here with the commission. And we have two guests we're very happy to have this evening, and Gail Queen is here with us tonight, a longtime resident and realtor in town and a famous husband, I hear. So, thank you so much for coming. We're going to introduce the session and then you'll have a chance to introduce yourself and then there'll be a series of questions around, you know, the history of Morro Bay and the relevance. Michael Woody is here with us tonight. Michael, thank you so much. Celine and Indian, a tribal member, really thrilled to have you here. And again, when we open it up, we'd ask you to give us a couple of minutes of introduction. We'd like to start the session, last, on session one, we started with Eric Meyer, Commissioner, longtime resident of Morro Bay, and tonight we get an introduction from Asia King, whose son is fifth generation in Central Coast. So Asia will give us a, an intro. Thank you.
Thanks, and I have an update on that statistic, actually. Did a little bit more digging around, but at the end of our last meeting, a couple of weeks ago, I asked panelists some specific questions about, to discuss the non-white or non-European histories of our community, the things that, the people that shaped our community. And today, we have the honor of hearing from citizens of the Celinean Nation and some of the indigenous residents of the Central Coast, so I'm really glad that that question is being answered. And in order to fully appreciate their, some of their histories, I know that personally I wanted to start with a personal anecdote of how both Celinean and Schumash histories have impacted my own life and the history, how those histories have shaped our communities, the whole Central Coast community today. I was born and raised here in San Luis Obispo County. My children are actually, as of like yesterday's count, seventh generation and probably more so than that, of seventh-generation residents born and raised and growing up in the area, particularly North County. They're growing up in a place where the streets in these towns are named after various branches of my family. My great-grandmother was a Pioneer Day Queen in Paso in the 90s, and my mother, my grandmother, my great-grandmother and her mother and grandmother all grew up on the Warwell Ranchland in Creston. So O'Donovan, Garcia, Quintana, all those are local names, historical names of some part of my family tree. So as a descendant of some of the area's original Spanish and later Irish ranching families, I grew up with a sense of pride about our local heritage. However, it wasn't really until I was way, well on my way to adulthood that I learned about the older history of the ranches that my ancestors owned and worked on in this area. The ranches, and some of these comments I'm about to make might not be specifically accurate, but they're part of my family's lore and history. The ranches my mother spent summers on, growing up in Creston, were part of some of the original Spanish and Mexican land grants that made up the Central Coast, and I think Eric went over some of those here in Morro Bay last session. So as a product of a colonial system, land grants enclosed and divvied up pasture lands into ranchos, granting and selling them to European immigrants like my family members and families for agriculture, for rangeland use. But these lands at that time, they were not empty wilderness when they were sold. They were already occupied landscapes, they were home to indigenous communities and had been for a long time. And it's easy to think that because those ranchos were formed eight, 10, or 12 generations ago, that I myself am not implicated in what is actually a brutal and unjust history of native communities losing their lands, but I can actually directly trace the ways that I as an individual have benefited from that colonial history. And I'm not going to go into too much depth, but just to kind of paint a picture, my family's original ranch land was sold after a time. The wealth that was created by those sales were then inherited down the line of my family members. Because of that inheritance, I can identify each generation of my family has been able to purchase a home on the Central Coast, something that, as we all know, is becoming more and more difficult. Because of that inheritance, we've been able to call the Central Coast home for now at least seven generations. And don't get me wrong, my family would never be called wealthy or even much more than blue collar and working class, but without that original first land grant and the ability to purchase that rancho land, I would not have been able to grow up in a Tascadero, in a safe community with good schools, and I would not be able to have been a member of the Central Coast, and I probably wouldn't be back here today. So the house I grew up in was bought by my grandmother with money given to her, by her mother, whose inheritance came directly from her mother, which was a direct result of ranchos in Creston. And this, of course, is a story of every part of America, but I bring it up today because it has a history that directly allowed me to call the Central Coast home, and so therefore has a direct impact on what our community looks like today. And because there are a number of stories like mine across the Central Coast, you can find all sorts of Pioneer Day Queen and royalty, old families that are still here today. Morro Bay's history really cannot be fully told or preserved without hearing from indigenous communities whose ancestors were here a long, long time before mine. So my hope is that we can consider and integrate our area's oldest histories in a meaningful way as we continue to move forward and explore what historic preservation really means to us here in Morro Bay. So that was my speech. I'm excited to hear from you.
Thank you so much, Asia, thank you. Seven generations, wow. I'd like to go to our panelists now, and Gail, can you give us two minutes, just sort of tell us your history in Morro Bay and how long you've been here and give us a sense of, yeah. Oh, there's a button.
Okay. I've been here 70 years. We first came over here in the late 40s and we.
It's best if you speak right into the mic, yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Better, thanks.
We came here in the late 40s and we tented in army tents down on the beach, Tascadero Beach, where the old cloisters was. My, I was lucky enough to have been partially raised here, my kids were all raised here, it's been a blessing. When I was raised here, there probably were 500, 800 people. We, I think that my most memorable conversation over the years was with Lou Matston's daughter. Now, do we know who Lou Matston is? He was here at the turn of the century and where the, where Mike's barber shop is, across from Mike's barber shop, was his stable. I think, I don't know if he shewed horses or what, but he became a landowner, he owned the block all the way around Mike's pizza port, all the way down to, what is that, Maite Marina?
Pacific.
Pacific. And he was a heavy, the daughter told me, and she told me this throughout the 70s, he was a great drinker and the mother was a teetotaller, and they fought all the time, and the daughter said it was a miserable upbringing and she couldn't wait to get out of here. She went to a school by horse and buggy, and I think she told me it was in Cayucas. There's a picture of her in Dorn's Restaurant, a little classroom, and she said that the mother, when the mother inherited all the property, she put a caveat on the property that could never hold a business that had liquor. And I don't know if anybody's ever researched that. They were quite wealthy. Lou, the daughter, ran away from home as quickly as she could because her mother was very strict, and she married an oil cater from Bakersfield, and he hit oil. He hit oil in the 30s and they became immensely wealthy, and she would entertain me in this incredible mansion in San Francisco and a social club. I was totally out of my league, but that was the daughter of Matston, who was one of the early pioneers. As for real estate, the real estate happenings through the 70s, well, 60s, the, I was here when they constructed the, the smokestacks. So that changed the landscape dramatically. And then the second thing that changed the landscape was the tract of homes that went on the beach track by three partners named Red Beck and Parker from Lamore and Visalia, and they built over, over 100 homes maybe, and the model home was backed up on Terra Avenue on the freeway fence, and what was amazing is they had sparkly ceilings and central vac. We thought we were in a Hollywood prop and they were all those ranch homes that you can see today. And then, of course, the third thing really broke my heart, that changed my perspective was the development of the waterfront from fishing to commercial. And that, in my mind, happened overnight, and that was heartbreaking, because I grew up with all the fishing families, and that's a memory that was great.
Great start. So let's, let's go to Michael next and we'll come back to you, Gail. Michael, can you give us a sort of an introduction? And again, we're sorry your mom couldn't make it tonight, Tony. Thank her very much for trying and I hope she feels better.
Yeah, she, that's my fault she's not here, as I shared with everyone. Learn to check dates on eggs before you cook parents' omelets in the morning. It's my fault. First of all, it's a real honor to be here. I mean, on behalf of my mother, obviously you folks have met, and myself, thank you so much for having, for having me here tonight and giving a voice to something that often is overlooked, and that is the heritage of this region and in a lot of respects, where my family comes from is the indigenous heritage to this area. I am the great, great, great grandson to Yasubio Encinalos from the Encinalos Adobe up at the Los Padres National Forest. It was through that family that gave birth to the Bylone family that ended up coming down through, from the Milpitas Land Grant down to the Essensian Land Grant, and the Bylone family that lived up at the, up at Torrel Creek, just getting my directions messed up, east of Morro Bay, between Morro Bay and Tascadero. It was that same Bylone family, the four kids, that ended up losing their property to a lawsuit that took place back in the 1920s and 1930s and all over property that should have been theirs because in the 1850s, the federal government guaranteed that the Indians that were left on these properties for these land grants had rights to those lands, and all of that was taken away from them back in the 1920s, 1930s. Going back to the Milpitas Land Grant up in Monterey County from the San Antonio Mission, that was property that was seen, that was taken away from our family and other families back in, finally in 1875, the Department of Interior, United States Department of Interior ruled in 1886 that that land grant was a fraudulent land grant and unjustly took away all that property from my family and from other groups. Because of the lawsuit that took place in the San Luis Obispo County Superior Court back in the 1920s and 1930s and the property that was lost up at Torrel Creek, the family had to once again move. That family, one of them was Maria Antonio Bylone and her husband Edward Romeo Pierce. Between those two, they had six kids, and their kids' names were Eddie Pierce, my grandfather, I'm going to get these, you're going to have to help me, Les Pierce, Bud Pierce, Bill Pierce, Dutch, Dutch Pierce, and the sister Bessie. The last one that was surviving lived all the way until 2004 when he passed away, and that was my grandfather Eddie Pierce. The Pierce brothers stayed together, after leaving the area, and stayed together through Morro Bay and became one of the important stories to starting the abalone industry that happened here through the Pierce family fisheries, along with many other families that also partook in all of that. The story here is, it is very interesting when you go back and you actually go through the documents, but I have to, I'd be remiss if I didn't address something real quick to Ms. King.
To Asia, yeah.
To Asia, yeah, Ms. King. I truly, really do appreciate your comments. Not many people really understand the history of all this, but I kind of always want you, and I've had people ask me about this, on a personal note, the success of your family and. and of you, in today's world, it really has to do with all of your hard work and everything that you've done. I really appreciate that you recognize what's happened in the past and whatnot, but don't ever let it neglect the amazing volume of hard work that you have done as a person, and the work that you do, and every day, and so please don't ever neglect any of that. I appreciate your comments, but I just hope that's not lost at times during these discussions, that so much of your success is so personal in everything that you do. So, I'm here to answer any questions, anything you can do to help with this.
Fantastic start. So, let me start with the first question, and then commissioners, I'd love for you to join in. I'm really interested in the focus on fishing, and what the two of you might bring to it. Gail, you talked about what a change it was in town to go from commercial fishing to not, and just the heritage of what we were as a fishing village, but also the complexity of it. My understanding is there were multiple phases to it?
Right.
Yeah.
My connection was with the Brebs family. The Brebs family, in particular Frank and Skinner Pierce. Skinner Pierce was an incredible abalone diver, and a very, very close to my husband. And so we knew Skinner, we had a connection with Les Pierce, who was probably your great, great, great uncle.
He would have been my great uncle.
Great uncle.
Yeah, my great uncle.
And Frank started processing at Giovanni's. I think it was, yeah, it was Giovanni's. And he would tell incredible fishing stories, and Skinner would tell incredible diving stories. Skinner was noted as the best abalone diver ever, ever. Well, there's the bust of him down at the waterfront. He was legendary. Well, he could do everything. He was also Sandy Kofek's golf partner. He was a golfer. He was an expert rifleman. He could do everything, and my husband never met anybody like that in his life. So Skinner Pierce and Frank Brebs, they were key to this fishing. And the Silvesters, and the Dennises, the Monroes, they were all big fishing families here. And it was sad that, you know, that all went away. It changed Moro Bay forever, because there was legacies. And we could get abalone. A lot of people don't even know what abalone is now. So, I would think the fishing industry was built with the Brebs', the Silvesters', the Pierce's.
Michael, do you want to add to the, especially around the abalone fishing, which is so, in a way, fundamental?
Yeah, it's something that I know my family's had long talks over about all this, and let me clarify something on that. Edward Pierce, when he got married to Maria Antonio Bylone and had the six kids, there was a second marriage, and the second marriage was to Catherine McCormick. And it was through Catherine McCormick that there was the, also, the half-brothers and half-sisters, I think is what you call them, when they're, yeah, half-brothers and half-sisters. And that was the group of Charlie Skinner, Walter June, and there's two others, and I can't remember what they are, and my mother's going to get me for not remembering the other ones. But that was, therein lies the half-brothers that also worked with them as well in all this. And they were all Indian, because Kate was Indian as well. But yeah, one thing that I know my family and my tribe, we talk a lot about, is we feel strongly that the history, the fishing history, has never been represented well in this community in terms of recognizing not just the family I come from, but so many other families. The names, obviously, the Silvesters, the Brebs, Rivera, my gosh, and I'm going to miss a few, and I apologize for not having them all off the top of my head, but there's just something missing here, to know that this community was founded on this, was truly founded on all of this, in this fishing industry. And if this discussion can start, whether it be a few weeks ago, or tonight, or whatever, we feel strongly that there needs to be some level of recognition for everything that has been done that got us to this point of where we're at today as a community in terms of the fishing industry, and that should be recognized.
So can we focus with both of you? First, I'll go to you, Michael, a little bit more on that. How do you see that recognition? How would that story be told? And I'm especially interested in like how the planning of the city can respect and honor that tradition, in a way that, you know, you said something wonderful to us when we met with you. You talked about investing in ourselves, which I thought was just a great quote.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's that concept of, you know, going back to that quote, you know, we talk about investing in communities, but we need to invest in who we are, and where we came from. And, you know, when it comes to the fishing industry and those families that were involved in this, without trying to sound self-serving to my family heritage, you know, a lot of communities do the little things out there, whether it be naming of streets, naming of buildings, historical, what are they called, the placards that they put up?
Interpretive panels.
Interpretive panels, thank you. I mean, there's just all kinds of ways to do something like that, that would be easy no-brainer things to do in this community, that would be incredibly well-received. I know a lot of people, when they come here, being this is a tourist community, they, you know, like anybody, they want to know about the history of this community. They don't want to see it neglected or torn down.
It makes it more interesting.
Yeah, it does. It makes it more interesting. Anytime you go to any, anywhere around the world, Italy, Spain, wherever you go, it's, the interesting side of it is when you get there and you understand the heritage of that area and of the region. And to me, it's been, I think, lacking in a lot of respects here, the history of this community, in particular when it came to the fishing industry, and the families that really brought this forward. Maybe just little ideas like that, start with that.
Yeah, nice. Gail, do you have anything you'd add?
Yes, every foot of that walkway around the waterfront should be dedicated to a family that fished. Every foot of it.
Wow. Yeah, Asia.
I'm curious, since you saw the changing of industry firsthand, what do you feel like were the big catalysts that brought about those changes? Are there specific points in time that you can really point to that--
That brought about those changes?
Yeah, like when was the, was it an environmental thing that the fisheries were no longer sustainable, were to support those families?
I really think that tourism drove the commercial aspect of it, and the tourism from the valley. We became commercial. More hotels, more restaurants.
And did you see families exit to other--
Oh, yeah.
--towns to continue fishing businesses?
Right. It dwindled. It left. I think it left.
Eric, let's, just so everybody knows, Eric was instrumental in inviting our two panelists tonight, so thank you, Eric. Questions?
My dad, by the way, rebuilt Skinner Pierce's house years and years and years ago, Terry Rep. But I have a question with respect, slight change of pace. In the early days of people coming to Moro Bay, according to what I've read, it seemed to be the advent of Highway 41 and the Coast Highway coming down Carmel, it brought tourism into Moro Bay, and that was in the 30s and 40s. But the people who were coming into that beach track, for instance, looking for homes when you first started in the industry, was it essentially the same story as we see today, people just trying to get out of the valley? What kind of story was it that was bringing people to Moro Bay back then?
The first big migration was probably in the 30s and the 40s from San Joaquin Valley, like my dad, the Italians, the Portuguese.
And what brought them? What was it that was attractive?
Oh, escaping the fog and then escaping the heat. We had to get out of Fresno. My earliest memory is, we left because it was so hot. My dad bought a house on Bali Street, on the beach track, a little wooden house, for $2,300, and that was '53? Don't you have the deed? Didn't I give you--
In his pocket.
Yeah, so--
He paid too much.
Yeah. We had to take a job up in Arcata to plum a tract up there to get the money to buy the house at $2,300. But that was a little house, and then that migration, when Red Beck and Parker started building in the 60s, you know, they flooded over here, they started flooding over here more so from the San Joaquin Valley. Then an interesting thing happened. In the late 70s, early 80s, here came LA. You know, they had, like my friends used to say, they retired earlier, they had cash in their pocket, and they liked, you know, they wanted to get out of LA. And then probably in the night, when it switched back to San Joaquin Valley, it switched back to very wealthy people from San Joaquin Valley, doing big projects and buying big homes, you know, like down on the beach, what's Aunt Terri's project called?
Toro.
Toro, down there. The contractors that I work with, they built Zanzibar across the street, and, I mean, they stopped the tract home, and they bought, they started doing commercial projects, and they did the Masterpiece Hotel, they did that building, is it Deefen? Yeah, whatever that building is.
Deafen.
Yeah. Yeah, so it came back, it circled back to Fresno in a way, you know, starting in the late 80s.
And Michael, just because the Pierce family was fishing here before the Navy built the Embarcadero, the fishing industry, both of you guys probably know, was dramatically different before the Embarcadero than it was after the Embarcadero, and like getting out, even as a fisherman, getting out of the harbor in the old days, going through the waves, any of those stories surviving in your families, things about that era?
Well, I have a survivor story about his relative. I just met him. Skinner Pierce had the second worst recorded bins at Scrip Institute in San Diego.
Was that really?
Yeah, he said he set the underwater record for walking, because his line got cut.
Yeah.
And he survived that. There was no bravery in my family like the Pierce family. The Pierce family were, they could do a lot of stuff.
Yeah, I know the first one that was born, Bill Pierce. Bill Pierce died in 1945, because his line got tangled up and he was killed in a fishing accident, obviously. Back to your question, I think back to your point on all of this, where this was going was, you know, how has this changed? And if I could co-tail on what you were saying about this, that's something that I know my mother's talked extensively about, and I've seen as well, is this idea of, we have people coming here to Moro Bay, and they're bringing their ideas and great intentions to here, and they want to learn more about this area, but unfortunately, because we have not preserved so much of this area, they're lacking in an understanding of what they see out here. So it's easy for a group to come in with maybe a building proposal, and I think that's the classic one, or something that they want to do, not realizing that that old shack that you're tearing down really has historic significance, it's just not an old building. Or the history that really took place on certain properties out here and whatnot. I mean, that's, I know my family feels strongly that these are the types of things that are being forgotten in all of our discussions, and like you, my mother saw the stacks go in, and they saw the promises. They saw the promises of, oh, don't worry, we don't know how tall it's going to be, or, or even going through the whole history of how it was condemned from the federal government, and I won't get into that tonight. But that history, and those stories of how we got to here are being lost in all the discussions, and I know that that has been a real concern with my family, that here we are today watching growth and development take place, and we are continuing to lose who we really are and who we really came from 100 years ago, back before the turn of the century, in fact.
Yeah, that's a great point.
I wonder if we could focus, would you guys be willing to focus a little bit on downtown? Things that, because in a lot of ways, Moro Bay has not transformed as much as other towns. And it's interesting for us to sort of think of that. And again, the tough balance always is, we want more affordable housing, at the same time, I still think there's a way through planning to do both. But can you tell us a little bit about downtown? The barber shop, that's where I get my hair cut there, and so I really do love that place.
Well, we had one, Mike Dominguez, his great nephew today? What is Ryan? He was at the house today.
Too close.
I know, but how is he related to Mike Dominguez? The original Mike, who's 86? He's 86? He should have been here today. No one thought about it. I didn't.
But we're going to do another one, so to nominate him is a good idea.
He's a font of information. He's the original Mike. That would be a good one. You know, the building across from Bay Theater was the old post office. I don't know if you, have you seen pictures of that?
I've seen pictures, yeah.
That should have, that should have not been modernized. I don't know, I don't know about the usage of it now, but that's okay, I guess. But we lost, we lost something there. The kitty corner from the coffee shop that's going in, was it Mike, was it the, it's an art gallery?
Yeah.
That's a classic building, and in the 40s, it was a saloon. And across the street, where the liquor store is, was little motels. And that was very interesting to see when you were a little kid. That building, that building is classic. And upstairs, it's, I mean, it's pretty much the same footprint.
Yeah.
And I think, I don't know, there's some buildings around, there's some homes around that I think would be great to preserve. It would be, and I don't know if they're on the radar, but of course, the Katja House. Is that going to be preserved sometime?
This is why we're all having these discussions. At this point, there is nothing--
There is no plan.
And what we call the Stocking House, it could have been the Stocking or the Fairbanks House, and it's a little bit south of Gladys's house, Gladys Walton. You know the house?
On the top of the ramp.
And then the house on Moro Avenue, close to Moro Cove, the red one with the tower. Those houses go way back, and they're pretty much the same. I'd love to see those preserved.
Yeah, thank you. Michael, do you want to add?
Yeah, I do. And making sure I don't get too sidetracked on making sure I approach your question. One thing that I've noticed is, we don't have, that is true, we haven't had a lot of change like a lot of coastal communities have, and that is fortunate for what we've been able to accomplish here. And for that, I commend everybody in this community for that.
No, it's the community that's done that.
Yeah, exactly. And sometimes it can be made for difficult discussions, because sometimes you get into the feeling of, you know, what do they call it? Nimbism, and every other acronym that we all know of. But in actuality, what I have seen in this community is this constant, is people that are still fighting for the identity of who we are, maintaining who we are, because a lot of us who've been lucky enough to, like probably everybody in this room, travel across the United States, especially going over to the East Coast, the New England area is one of my favorites, or traveling internationally and looking into other countries, and seeing how these beautiful areas in Italy comes to mind, where they have preserved buildings that are hundreds and hundreds, if not thousands, of years old. And we here in America, and especially along where we're living, how are looking back and saying, oh geez, that's 60 years old, let's tear it all out. But yet, those places, when you go to other parts of this country on the East Coast, or travel internationally, all over the world, you see these areas that have been preserved for hundreds, if not thousands, of years, and thank goodness they had the foresight to do that, and those are some of the most desirable-- to do that, and those are some of the most desirable places to go and to be and to invest and to live. And my family, I think, feels strongly on this when we say, let's make that our goal here, where it seems like, well, we have to do everything we can to develop, you know, our economy here, for example, but we are thinking very short sighted. I was, it was interesting to watch, for example, people who mean very well, which I know the local chamber does, I know they mean extremely well, I don't doubt that for one second. But it was interesting to listen to an entire presentation tonight, and out of all the things that were important to the Chamber of Commerce as far as the tourism, as far as the economy and getting businesses and the pro Morro Bay and everything else, is there was not one slide or one discussion over the people of this community or the preservation of this community. And not realizing that, on the one hand, you have, and not to pick on the chamber, but, you know, for them to say, well, here we are, we want to enhance tourism because tourism is fundamental to our economy here, but also not understanding that what's bringing people here is the fact that we are that small town and people are looking for that. So if we start tearing down to become the tourist destination that they think people want, you end up destroying the real reason why people are coming here.
Well, I like your complex vision. I was surprised Erica didn't even mention preservation.
I was, I was really, I literally.
And yet, she knew that we were doing the hearing tonight.
Yeah, I mean, I literally sat there, and it's like I said, I think these people mean well, I've met a lot of these people. But, you know, it's interesting to watch a local Chamber of Commerce and the idea of preservation is nowhere on their radar.
So let's transition. One of the big influences is going to be the power plant site, as it now becomes reconsidered. And not to discuss the power plant, which we can't do, but can you tell us historic issues around the power plant, whether it's fishing, World War II, or going way back to the, you know, the indigenous, the tribal issues that exist around the, you know, the 110 acres?
The original power plant, when that was put into place, a lot of people don't realize this, but we got to go back to the original use of this. The land before it went to the Department of Defense or the War Department at the time, I believe it was, but it was actually condemned, the original property was actually condemned by the federal government in order to build what became the Morro Bay, what do they call it, the Morro Bay, you know, where the military did the training at? There was a name for the Aqua, Betty?
Wasn't it Navy?
Yeah, it was Navy, yeah.
Navy training?
Yeah, thank you, I think it was the Navy Training Center, yeah, the Morro Bay Naval Training Center, I believe it was. In order to acquire that land, that land was actually condemned by the federal government. I think it was 100 and some odd parcels representing 30 some odd homes or something along those lines.
It was actually, Scott, do you know anything about this? Was it eminent domain, is that true?
I don't know the process how it was acquired, I'm unfamiliar with it.
Super interesting.
Yeah, but it was originally condemned by the federal government, so, but after that time, it was condemned, so they ended up going in for the war effort and, you know, obviously with Pearl Harbor that took place. During about five or six years during the early 40s, this is when it was the naval training base for Morro Bay. After the, everything was done with that area, the landowners, although a lot of them wanted their property back, if not all of them, did not get their property back from the federal government. The government sold it off as surplus property to the county of San Luis Obispo at this time in the mid 40s. And when it was sold to San Luis Obispo, it was sold for $80,000, for hundreds some odd acres, I think it was. Now, at that time, the county of San Luis Obispo decided to say, okay, we're going to end up moving forward within a few more years, and they ended up selling it to PG&E, which became the stacks that you see here today. And that was, I believe it was in the early 50s that this took place, and they sold it to PG&E for, just at that same amount of money, the same $80,000. And they sold it to them in order to build a, the power plant that we see here today all these years later. At the point that it was sold to Morro Bay, excuse me, to PG&E, they did not have any plans or design, but they gave them permission to build a power plant there. That would be analogous to, you know, our city staff, which would never do this in today's world, where they'd say, hey, here's a piece of property for you to build, whatever you want on it, have at it, and you don't have to have any other approval from us. So PG&E decided to, after they got the property, to hire out to Bechtel Engineering. Bechtel Engineering put together all the plans and everything, and they came up with the plans to build the power plant that we see here today. And at the time, in the early 50s, nobody knew exactly how tall the towers were going to be. In fact, it was reported in the local paper that they felt strongly there'd probably only be one tower, there's not going to be any more than that, we're not, that's way too far down the path. Well, lo and behold, the towers went in, the first one went in, and it ended up being 450 feet, isn't that right, Scott? Yeah, about 450 feet tall. In the newspaper at the time, they talked about, nah, there should be no taller than 300 feet. So the community kept being told one thing and not realizing what they were walking into. When the development of all this property took place at the time, they unearthed many, many, many native artifacts, villages, bones, that were just unbelievable. I mean, it was just unreal. A lot of them ended up in the dumpster, a lot of them ended up in people's garages. They were taken away like they were just a prized possession. As I always like to say, you know, it's really interesting that native culture has been so undervalued in our country that at the time, that if you were digging up, you know, somebody else's grave, oh, it would have been, everything would have came to roaring stock.
Absolutely.
But when it came to my culture, when that got dug up in the 1950s, it was just something fun to hang on your walls and something fun, or you just throw it in a dumpster and nobody cared. And that was in the 1950s, I mean, it's not that long ago that this was happening. So all of that took place. So finally, the smoke, the, excuse me, the stacks ended up going in. I think the last one was put in the early 60s, I think it was, something, yeah, something like that. And then over time, PG&E ended up selling the plant in 1996, I believe it was, and they ended up selling it for half a billion dollars. And that kind of starts arcing to where we are today.
Got it.
So this is the, that's the quick history of where we're at. So, and I share this kind of lengthy story with you to tell you as a planning commission and a city staff and everybody else, is that, you know, where some people will say, gee, I've been here for 20 years, I've been here for 30 years, well, our families watched all of this happen. And when we watched all this happen and it got transferred down to generation after generation, and I've got scrapbooks of this at my house right now I can show you, that these are the fights that we're looking at, that we're saying, hey, we need to take a serious look, how did we really get here at this, at this point when we have these discussions? You know, it's one thing to say, gee, I came here 10 years ago and this is what it is and here's where we should go, but you have families that have been here an incredibly long time and who are saying, wait a minute, when, when does this insanity stop? And when do we right the wrongs of the past? I mean, this was condemned, you know, I want everybody, if anybody remembers anything tonight about that power plant area, it's remember this, that all started with the federal government condemning that property and taking the property away. It started there. And that unjustness has never been rectified to this day. And that's why there's so many issues going on down here and why there's so many longtime families who do have these concerns today.
Right. Can we switch to Gail?
Please.
And Gail, can you give us your, how do you see the power plant? How do you understand its influence and its changing influence right up to today?
Oh, I hate them. I hate them for a personal reason, I was.
That's a good start, yeah.
I hate them. When they were building the first one, my dad came home and said that a man with the last name Maldonado had just fallen off. And I always remembered that, and I would stare at it and it kind of, always remembered it. Here I am, 80, and I remember his name. So that was a bad start for me. And, I don't know, I think we were sold, maybe not even sold, just manipulated, I hate, I hate that power plant there. I, all my life, my memory, I hated it. And I, and I remember George Leegs, the owner of the Harbor Hut, he would stand out front and he goes, you know, one good earthquake and we're all dead.
Yes, thank you.
And I think that that could have been true. And they can't take them down quick enough for me. And the old timers felt the same way.
Thank you. Asia, do you have anything you'd like to focus the conversation on?
I don't think so. I think this has given me a lot of ideas of things we can recommend and the master planning of the power plant area and things we might be able to do to remember these stories and these histories.
Yeah.
As things change and develop. So thank you guys for your inspiration and ideas.
Joe?
You know, I can appreciate that Morro Bay has not changed as many of the other beach communities have. You know, but I'm also aware, you know, human beings are not designed to perceive very well, very slow changes. We're, you know, animals of quick moves. And even the short period of 10 years or so that I've been here, you know, I don't think I'm particularly aware of significant changes in Morro Bay. For me, it's still, it's a small, quaint, beautiful town that's, that I'm privileged to be part of. But these kinds of conversations, which take a much longer perspective, force you to say, wait a second, Morro Bay has changed and it's changed very significantly over time, and it's been an imperceptible change to the people who are experiencing it in the moment, but when you look back from 50 years, things are radically different and it says to us, well, we better be aware of that function going on and take interest in it so that it goes the way we want and not the way we don't want. That's all.
Just to add on to your thing, Joe, it's so interesting, and Bill was here on the previous panel, and Morro Bay, it's a city of people. And it is the lives that go, you know, so far back with you, so far back with Asia, so far back with Gail, that that's the story. And we have to find a way, I think, to understand that or we lose it. And if, you know, I'll forever quote you, if you'll let me, invest in ourselves, and that's sort of the story here in Morro, it's the story everywhere, but maybe even more so here, I think. Because I think the history is evident. Eric?
Well, I just want to thank you, number one, for speaking, because the people and their stories, in my opinion, really inform more about who we are. If you don't listen, how do you know what we were? I love hearing the stories and we've had other speakers in the past and their stories are also awesome, and we intend to have more. And then as we go forward with whatever happens in the city, the community hopefully brings its elders out and people who have been here a long time to keep informing the discussion so that we can get more clear on exactly what it is we want to be when we grow up, so to speak.
Well, and you're now part of our alumni, so if you don't mind, we'll be able to reach out to you in the future when we actually kind of have an idea in mind. Michael?
Yeah, I think that'd be really appreciated. And let me capitalize on something real quick that was just pointed out here, and because there's a lot of truth to this, is that one of the concerns that I've always seen, and we see it everywhere, but we also see it here unfortunately, is that sometimes I feel like we don't take the time to listen to each other enough. And I feel like that there are groups out there that are remarkably well-intentioned, that if another group comes forward and says, there's another perspective to this, sometimes there's a real feeling of, well, it just gets kind of blown off, you know? And sometimes you have to learn to say, let me look at this from a different perspective. What if you look at it from a family that has been here for hundreds, if not thousands of years, but, you know, going back 100 plus years, going back to the turn of the century, and how those stories were brought down from your great grandparents, down to your parents, down to you. And they're not just stories that you read about in the history book, they're the stories that you have in the scrapbook underneath the, you know, in the closet somewhere, buried with cobwebs somewhere in the attic or something like that. And those are the stories that you grew up with around the dinner table during Thanksgiving and Christmas. And sometimes I feel like we all need to do a better job just kind of listening to each other a little bit and realizing there is another perspective in terms of saying, you know, what was here 100 years ago, what was here 150 years ago, or even 200 years ago? How did this really look? And, you know, why are people, you know, frustrated over, you know, something that is imperceptible, is a building being torn down, or what happened at the power plant or the real history of all of this? It's because there is a long-term history to this, and it's not just something we're reading about in a history book, it's just something that's been passed down in our families.
Yeah, really true. And, you know, to connect it back to us, that's sort of our job here at the Planning Commission, is to be that bridge between planning policy and the community, and not just with the activists. You know, this is for us even more than historic preservation, this is the story of the city. So, Gail, would you have an encouragement for us? Can you like tell us what to do?
Well, I'd like you to, the first thing I'd like to see is that the city buys the Morro Bay Elementary. I would like that. I've, in the past, I've talked to the school district who owns it, along with the state. I don't know why we can't have it, why we can't restore that, why we can't have that.
You mean get it to restore it, yeah?
Yeah, the cultural center or a museum or whatever, that's a beautiful building.
That's a nice piece of architecture, yeah.
Yeah, and there's, and there's no question in my mind that there are a lot of other communities across the United States, and especially even around the world today, that if they had that in their backyard, their community would be all over it right now. And I drive by it most every day, like a lot of us, and every day I drive by, I shake my head and I think, why is it just sitting there like that? Isn't there something productive that we in this generation can do and say, hey, let's do something that everybody says, oh, that's just not possible? Well, it is possible. You know, can we do something with those types of things out there? She's exactly right.
You guys are great. We've got about five minutes left. Could we open it to the public if anybody has something to say? And this would be questions for the panelists. And Bill, can I, we start with you, you're one of our ex-panelists, would you, do you have any comment? Did you like anything you heard?
Well, I do, yeah, Bill Martinie, again, actually I did, and, you know, I think, first off, you hit a nerve with Skinner, he was actually going to build a road on one of our ranches and about three weeks later, he died up on Big Sur. And I just thought, I maybe go into one minute, Skinner was a phenomenal person, burned that, grew up with Skinner, my wife. And he was up clearing a slide on Big Sur, I don't know if you know where McWay Falls is, the famous falls, just north of there, slide broke loose, Skinner was on a backloader, and he went over and he's buried on the beach up there, they never did find him or the equipment.
Wow.
So bottom line is, I call that Skinner's Beach. So if you ever go up just past the waterfall and look down, Skinner.
I love that story.
Yeah, just a little add-on for Skinner. The other is talking about the power plant, and I think that's where, you know, I show up at a couple of these meetings because we have, you know, I hit the breakers, we have the batteries coming in, we have the offshore wind, you're talking about change. There's a tidal wave coming at us. And I'm not saying that some of it isn't good, some of it isn't bad, but that's where I think the public and, you know, thanks for everyone showing up to, if nothing else, have a different look at it or a different side. What I wanted to bring up on the power plant property is the Native American. Again, this area was half Tumash, they say Tuma, and also the Salinian or the Salinan. And so I think what popped up into my mind was, first off, they are talking about the Tumash, you know, preserve offshore and that. And I think the Salinan, who is actually from here north, should also, if that goes through, it should be a dual, you know, dedication to both tribes and not just the Tumash. I heard just recently, and I knew it for a fact, where the three-story public housing or the affordable housing went in on that piece of property, that was an extremely sensitive Native American site. I know Eric grew up across the road from there and there were, you know, burial sites in that area. And I understand, and get me if I'm wrong, that when they were, and I don't think there's And I understand, and get me if I'm wrong, that when they were, and I don't think there's any architectural or, not architectural, but, you know, as far as native out there watching, but I heard that two bodies were dug up there. And I don't know if that's true or not, but I, you know, and that there should have been a lot more sensitivity to that site when it was being prepared for building those buildings. Because that's just a recent story that I think that that happened, but in the same breath, that was an extremely important native site also. So I guess that's just my comment and just to thank them again.
Yeah.
Showing up, thank you.
Terry, yeah, come on, Terry.
Can I make a comment as to Bill's comment?
What's that?
I have a comment with respect to that. So that creek, as the creek comes down there, it moves around from season to season and the banks change and the Indians would show up in our property out there every few years and we would re-bury them 20 or 30 feet in because the bank had washed them. So, yeah, there's a lot of, a lot of old humans in that neighborhood.
Terry, what did you hear tonight?
So can I make some comments? Because you said you wanted questions, but I really am prepared to make a few comments on what I did hear.
Okay.
I have previously quoted the phrase, "The future is calling to us to make good decisions." The flip side of that, and I think it speaks to the indigenous population and the culture of Hispaniola that came to this part of the world and was eventually pushed out by the American sea-to-shining sea movement, is bad immigration policy. Had the original natives on the west, on the east coast of America had a firm immigration policy, we would not, any of us, be here. Had the Spanish done a better job of protecting their rights to California, most of us wouldn't be here. To try to put that in context with your job, I see planning, planning commissions, community development, as the protectors of bad immigration. And I don't mean that in a racial or a cultural sense, but I mean the immigration of ideas that don't fit here in Morro Bay as manifest in bad development, bad projects, bad ideas. We're on the verge of, and I think Bill said tidal wave coming at us. And there's a phrase in Silicon Valley is that nothing happens until it all happens. And I think what we're about to see is an incredible change in what we call a picturesque fishing village. Now, I did want to comment earlier that while the fish may have swum away, the abalone's don't move very far, very fast. So I think that the loss of the abalone, although often attributed to the sea otters, was primarily the function of some really, really good fishermen who went out with their hard hats and their helmets and their weighted boots and essentially stripped a resource. And in fairness to the families of those early abalone divers, this was not prohibited and it was not regulated, and it was just simply ignorance that allowed us to lose a resource. The fishing, a little different, but still the same. We didn't have rigorous boundaries for fishing and types of fish and numbers of fish until basically the horse had left the barn. And now we're trying to close the barn door and protect our fisheries, but those fisheries have become so denuded that it's, to think that we're going to achieve a fishing village status going forward, I think is a myth. I think that all we can do is pay homage to the fact, like the Maritime Museum does, that once upon a time in Morro Bay, there were fishermen. Once upon a time in Morro Bay, there was a power plant. And to close this, to put it all in context with the early Native Americans, it's always been my vision that a repurposing of the existing power plant would be an Indian gaming casino that would be the ultimate tourist driver because we're nicely located between the northern and southern Indian gaming casinos. It's historic land taken by the federal government for military purposes, displacing the physical remains and the cultural heritage of the Salinian and the Tumash tribes that lived in this area. Somehow it would seem like there would be nice closure if the repurposing of that building would be a reflection or a mirroring back to the incredible life that the early cultures had here.
Terry, we can always count on you. Thank you.
I know you do. And thank you for your time.
Betty, I'm going to try to talk you into saying something. You're not gonna? Oh, okay. Well, then, we've done a great job here. I think we're interested, there's, we're planning on one more information session where we're talking to the community and we are going to focus on the power plant history in more detail in that one. And that will be, I think, in two weeks, Scott, we're going to try to do that.
That's what we were talking about, yeah.
Yeah. And then the final one will be a more technical one, and that'll be the end of this work, of this piece of work. And that'll be looking at how a preservation ordinance should or should not be considered, how it might be done. So we're looking forward to that. Scott, before I go to Asia to wrap it up, you've been real quiet. Do you have anything to add?
Well, I would like to thank the speakers. It was fantastic. This is, I love doing this. I love hearing about, you know, the recounting of the history of Morro Bay. It's kind of amazing. I would say that, you know, as part of all, we've been doing a lot of planning, you know, in Morro Bay since I got here. Downtown waterfront strategic plans, general plans, zoning code, things like that. And all of those documents speak to the preservation of the character and the sort of soul of Morro Bay in that, you know, small-town character is important, the fishing village component of what we are is important, although maybe not dissimilar to what Mr. Simons was saying, is not a, is not a larger factor today as it was in the past, but still recognizing that that's maybe where we came from in many ways. Those are all important factors and we did a lot of outreach as part of those efforts. So those are things that came back from the community. So this is what we've had here and what we've heard here today is reflective of all of those things that we heard in the community outreach, the workshops, the stakeholder interviews that we did as part of those processes. So this is right in line with that.
Thank you, Scott. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure you were listening.
I was having fun. It wasn't, it wasn't my show.
That was nicely said. I shouldn't have done that. That was low. Asia, can you wrap us up?
Yeah, I remember when we started these listening sessions, the gentleman, sorry to remind me his name, from the Historic Society.
Glenn Sillaway?
Yeah, made the comment of that the Historical Society is wanting to preserve the past in a progressive sort of way. I can't remember his exact words, but basically with the idea that we want to, we want to balance our histories and how they shaped who we are with some of these big things happening in our communities. And in my mind, someone who does economic development for a full-time job, I see those histories very easily complementing some of the stuff that Erica spoke about earlier. You know, I see maritime and fisheries as a really powerful, beneficial thing for our community, both historically and economically. And the potential for things like offshore wind or blue economies or these new energy, I really think that there's a way to remember our histories while facing these new developments in our communities. And I hope that as a planning commission, we can be a voice for preserving that history as those things move forward.
Beautifully said.
Hey, Chair Roshan, I think when we were taking comment, we didn't ask about--
We do have, I was just going to go there. I see Erica is on, Nate, we have someone with the hand raised?
That we do. Erica Crawford, you now have permission--
Hi, it's me again, sorry.
Hi, Erica.
Hello. I just, I really just wanted to communicate how grateful I am. I consider this programing to be like must-see TV. I really just, I don't often get personal because I'm a consummate professional, but, you know, I'm a New Englander. I'm from just outside of Boston. My grandpa worked on a shipyard. You know, history is so important to me and I'm a multi-generation New Englander. So I just, you know, I want to make sure that in our, in my presentation this evening, I did have something about, and it is a tenant of our economic development contract, to preserve and materially enhance Morro Bay's small-town character. And so I think staying at the table and making sure that inclusive planning and inclusive economic development includes history, but it also has to include the present company is really important. And I just, I put full faith in the smart people in leadership roles like you all at the Planning Commission to balance everything as we move forward. Because this is a really, truly incredible place that I've landed and I've been here as a resident for six years and in the region for 11, and I really feel like I hit the jackpot. So I just wanted to offer those closing comments. But thank you so much for this program. It's been really, really great.
Lovely for you to stay with us and thanks for that. And it does feel like a full circle. And could we actually clap for Michael and Gail? I thought it was great. Thank you all. And let's see, we have a couple of items to wrap up on here. Any unfinished business, commissioners? Comments, future agenda items, commissioners? Scott, any comments? Directors report?
I don't know, I don't have anything this evening.
I think we can go. Thank you, guys. We are adjourned.